I've been there several times. It's really cool. It's very short hike, beautiful, lots of good wine. Um, you're not supposed to, it smells funky. You're not supposed to stay there much. Isn't there a sign that says like low oxygen, be careful? My dad and my dad, who was a Forest Service Ranger, he's like, oh, we used to sit there all the time for hours drinking beer. Yeah. He's like, yeah, because it's kind of warm. Off set.
No.
Yeah.
No, it's a long ass trip.
How lucky you're going to be, Dad. What constitutes are quote unquote real guys?
Or it's been almost a decade since we have this discussion. For some reason, and I said that the scene, it's not a lot of answers. I think it's probably the shooting.
Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and the time is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl, can we have the roll call?
Keith Faver.
Here.
De Haven. Spruul.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. Uh, Councilmember De Haven is absent tonight, but we still have a quorum. Uh, so then we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I move that council approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Keith Faver.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, we're going to move on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The listing on our consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. After reading the list, I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A, approval of the council workshop slash special meeting and agenda minutes for April 8th, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure list for April 22nd, 2025. C, approval of a renewal application for fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Worldwide Restaurant Corporation, DBA Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut of Cortez located at 1119 East Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Paragon Business Investments LLC, DBA Gopher Food and Fuel located at 2410 Fairway Drive, Cortez. E, approval of a renewal application for retail marijuana store license for New View Pharma LLC located at 503 Patton Street, Cortez. F, approval of a renewal application for retail marijuana store license for Mount Annie's LLC, currently located at 310 East Main Street to be relocated at 435 East Main Street, Cortez. G, approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Celtic Fair to host an event on June 28th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the Cortez, or in the Park of Avita Park located at 400 North Mildred Avenue, Cortez. And H, approval of a special events permit application for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce to host a business after hours event on May 8th, 2025, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM on premises of Monizuma Heritage Museum located at 35 South Chestnut, Cortez. Would anyone like to see one, an item removed for discussion?
I move that council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Spruul.
Yes.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Keith Faver.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Do we have any comment cards? All right. Anyone from the public would like to speak, even if you didn't fill out a comment card? All right. Uh, seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to number four on our agenda. 4A is Historic Preservation Day Proclamation, presented by Helen West, our community and economic development.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council. Um, so I'm here on the annual request for a proclamation for May as Historic Preservation Month. Um, May, as you know through your memo, has been celebrated as National Preservation Week, um, as long as 1973. Um, and in 2005, the celebration was extended to the entire month of May. This is the 15th Annual Cortez Historic Preservation Day or Month or Days, uh, depending on what we're doing in the year. Um, and I just want to highlight some of the events for 2025. So number one, on Saturday, May 31st at 2:00 PM at the Monizuma Heritage Museum, uh, Ryan Spitler, an archaeologist for Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants, will be giving a presentation on the Civilian Conservation Corps camp that was located right here in Cortez in 19, in the late 1930s, and I think through 1941. Yes, Linda Toll is nodding at me. Um, so at the, at one time, the camp held up to 176 working men. Um, so a pretty big part of Cortez's history, even though it was pretty short. Um, so if you want to hear more about that, come to the Monizuma Heritage Museum. That presentation is free, open to the public, and again, Saturday, May 31st at 2:00 PM. Also, we are having a contest, a photo scavenger hunt. So last year, uh, the preservation board, along with the arts committee and the city, got a grant and did a historic Cortez coloring book. Um, and you can download the coloring book for free. Pick one picture from the book, print it off. Go to the library if you need to use a printer, print it, um, email me. I can maybe print one for you. Color in your picture and then go find it in the real world. Take a pic, grab a friend. Take a picture of yourself with your colored picture in front of the building or the site that you colored. Uh, and then send it to my email, hwest@cortezco.gov, and be entered to win various historic prizes. Um, and then the last thing this year, we have compiled a list of about 20 trivia questions, and we are going to be giving them to the local, some of the local bars that play trivia, like Blondies or Wild Edge Brewing Collective. Um, or if any of, if anyone else wants trivia for schools or the senior center or anyone, we'd be willing to give these trivia questions to any trivia players or designers. So, kind of some stuff going on. If you want to learn more about Historic Preservation Day, you can go to tinyurl.com/corteshistory. Very simple, tinyurl.com/corteshistory, all one word. I think that's it. Any questions?
All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. All right, proclamation for Historic Preservation Days. Whereas, May is the National Historic Preservation Month, and whereas, the City of Cortez Historic Preservation Board, in partnership with the Monizuma Heritage Museum and Ryan Spitler, archaeologist for Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants, Inc., will host a part program on the civilian conservation camps in Cortez at the museum on May 31st. And whereas, a photo scavenger hunt for historic locations in Cortez will be held during the month of May. And whereas, these events are sponsored by the City of Cortez, the Historic Preservation Board, Cortez Public Arts Advisory Committee, the cultural, the Cortez Cultural Center, the Monizuma County Historical Society, and Monizuma Heritage Museum, and the Cortez Retail Enhancement Association, and the Laura Foundation. And whereas, the City of Cortez recognizes the importance of keeping the history of Cortez and the surrounding area alive through education and cultural opportunities. Therefore, I, Rachel B. Medina, Mayor of the City of Cortez, proclaim May 3 through 4, okay, um, May 2025 as Historic Preservation Days, and do hereby urge citizens of this community to recognize and support opportunities to learn more about the history of our community through various events held that day. Witness my hand this 22nd of April, 2025.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to five agen, on our agenda. Five is public hearings. 5A is change of location for Lots of Pasta and That's a Pizza. Council will consider approving a change of location for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Lots of Pasta and That's a Pizza. Presented by City Attorney Patrick Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor, excuse me. Um, I'm pinch hitting for the city clerk, Linda Smith. She's not here today. She did the heavy lifting on processing this application. Uh, as you mentioned, it, it does require when you do a change of location, a public hearing is required. Uh, the requirements that the statute has for a change of location are, are the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult inhabitants in the neighborhood being met. Does the licensee possess either a leasehold or ownership interest in the new location? Does the new location comply with city zoning? And does the new location comply with distance requirements regarding schools? And the city clerk researched all that and determined that, uh, in her opinion, that they do comply with those four requirements. Uh, as I said, this is a public hearing, so the public can indicate its, uh, opinions on this if they so choose. Um, it's a application from, and I may butcher this, Cashmine LLC. Cashman. Okay, uh, DBA Lots of Pasta and That's a Pizza. The current location is 439 East Main Street, and they are looking to move to 925 South Broadway. Uh, in order to do that, you need to take input from the applicant. If, and I believe a representative from the applicant is here, if she wants to speak, and then open up the public comment portion of the hearing to allow any members of the public that may choose to comment on the item. Uh, and with that, I will, uh, turn it over back to you and, uh, allow for the applicant to speak.
Do we also hear from, uh, Chief Brock?
No, not on this. We, we, it's not a new license.
Okay, that's only the position for a license.
We don't have to do the criminal background check or anything.
Oh, okay. Great. Okay. I'd like to invite the applicant up. And then, is the microphone on for her? If the green light is on.
There we go. Can you hear me? Um, I've been in the, the old location for about six years. Um, I worked for the previous owners at the previous location for eight years, just trying to keep our little locals favorite alive. So, that's really all I got to say about it.
And then I guess for everyone's awareness, that's the Johnson Building you're moving into.
Yes. Yep, we're doing a bunch of remodel and stuff in there now, so hoping to be open within the first couple of weeks of May. If the kitchen's finished. So, that circle.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, well, thank you. We'll open this up for, uh, public hearing. Does anyone from the public like to speak, um, about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of that and, um, any other comments? I feel like this is a pretty straightforward, and I'm glad to see a business, because the Johnson Building needs reviving, and I'm glad that you were able to stay open and... Great. Lots of work going on in the Johnson Building.
Just, just a comment. Uh, boy, you've almost gone full circle from where you started. I mean, you're, that's, that's, yeah, it's very interesting. Um, if, Madam Mayor, if there's, uh, no further discussion, um, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious about your signage, how you're going to be able to attract people in there. Uh, what does your...
Ma, ma, yeah.
You mind coming? Yeah, sorry. Just so we can capture it for the recording and the, um, online audience.
So on the second entrance to the Johnson Building, there is a big sign already out there. We're going to just affix our sign to that. Um, I think I've talked with Linda about that. I don't think it's too big. I think we're right in the lines of where it needs to be, so. Yeah, and word of mouth, like, location is a big deal for a lot of businesses, but we have a pretty good following, so I don't think that's going to be an issue for us.
And, uh, if you need to help getting the word out, I highly recommend the Cortez Retail Enhancement.
Yes.
Um, AJ Dillon, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
I was just going to say, so based on the information from, from the clerk, uh, it appears your application meets the requirements for, to move your liquor license to 925 South Broadway, Cortez.
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the change of location on a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Cashman LLC, DBA Lots of Pasta and That's Pasta to relocate from 439 East Main Street to 925 South Broadway, Cortez.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Randall.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Keith Faver.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to 5B on our agenda. 5B is Resolution Number Two, Series 2025. A resolution approving the request for an exemption to the Land Use Code Section 5.03, driveways and access for property located at 906 North Market Street with one condition as stated in the resolution. Presented by Contract City Plan, City Planner Nancy Dawesdahl.
Hey, thank you and good evening. This request tonight is a type you've never seen before. It's based on our new code, a new provision in our new code. So, I'm going to go over what it is and the criteria. Um, the request is an exception, um, according to, um, or what's called a minor deviation to land use code 5.03D12, which requires the paving of access roads. The request is from, um, the Schaefer's for 906 North Market. Um, oh, it's still not coming up. Here I am looking at the PowerPoint, and you are not seeing it. There we go. Um, let's go back there. So, vicinity map, and, and this is pretty important, the location. So, North Market is, that we're talking about, is this little section right here. It's currently unpaved, um, bends into Ridge Drive, I believe. Um, at the, turns into Ridge Drive at the corner here. Um, so North Market down here is the, the portion with the median, and then it's, it's basically a little dirt section. It currently only serves as access to one other single-family dwelling. The lot is located right here, um, circled in there, um, and would be the only other home that, that is served by this section of North Market. Um, here's sort of a Google image of it. The unpaved portion of North Market, I'm, well, I'll undo this. Um, is from right here, curves all the way around to approximately there. So this section, um, is the unpaved portion. Um, just sort of a little background on that, um, the, as I said, it only serves the, the one existing home. Um, it does appear that the, that the, these lots were legally platted in the 1950s. Were not clear as to why this portion of the road was not paved at that time. Obviously, 1950s was a while ago. Um, and why it was not constructed fully when the other roads in the subdivision were. Um, this section, unpaved sections, approximately 480 feet long. The Schaefer's would be required under 5 point, um, the existing code section of 5.03D to pave from at least one of the existing sections, either Driscoll or Ridge Drive, at least as far as their proposed driveway. Um, probably about approximately half that 480 feet distance. Um, so, under this new provision in our, in the new land use code, um, you, you are allowed to deviate from the code to grant an exception, but first you must determine that there are unique characteristics of this property, inconsistency with surrounding property or other circumstances that make the strict application of the provisions of the land use code inequitable, physically impractical, or contrary to the public good. The applicants, um, according to that code provision, it's also important that the applicants provide objective reasons for the, the need for the deviation or exception. Um, they have actually provided you with five reasons that they feel that they meet the criteria of that code. Um, they are here tonight, so we can let them speak to a lot, um, to them. But they, they have submitted that they believe that their tract is unique in that it's the last empty undeveloped lot on Market Street. The homes nearby were built 30 or 40 years ago. Um, road service is no other property. There, there is one other, I believe. Tract F is bordered by Carpenter Natural Area and is on the very edge of city limits of Cortez. Um, no more homes could be built past Tract F. Um, so they felt like this was very unique, um, to meet the criteria of the exception. Um, the, the, there's, they're also talking about the fact that North Market is a divided street just south of them. And if you have headed out there, you see that it, it, it combines down into a single lane, and then there's kind of an odd jog in there, um, so that even if it, if it were to be continued, um, that, um, it's, it's basically more of a dead end directly into the existing property home. Um, so that they felt like it might be physically impractical to pave. Um, the other concern that they've provided is that, um, get back here, that this curve in here is a physically a low spot without the ability to drain. There's no storm sewer system in the area, no drainage system. So that if this were be, to be paved, they're concerned that it could cause drainage issues in the future. Um, what else? Um, once again, it's on the edge of the property. Um, in other words, I, I think I'll just sum up. They, they did feel like it met the criteria, that it's a unique property, um, and that it's impractical to, to, um, meet the paving requirement under the code. I think it's important that you consider that this is a unique property. There are other unpaved roads in the city that we have not allowed people to build on to without paving of those roads. In every one of those circumstances, it's not just one lot that's being served that we could find. Um, based on this, let's see, staff is recommending approval. I've gotten you kind of some unusual slide here, because we do want to, we're, we're recommending approval that you grant the exception according to the code. We did want to add a condition on there. Um, in that, and that's that this unimproved portion of the 900 block of North Market shall not be maintained by the City of Cortez. The applicant or owners of 906 North Market... The applicant or owners of 906 North Market shall maintain the road at all times to meet all requirements of the adopted building code requiring fire, regarding fire access roads. So the idea there is the city's not gonna plow it or maintain it, but they do need to keep it in a condition that the fire department or emergency vehicles could access the home at all times. That includes no plowing, et cetera, maintaining it in an acceptable width and condition. So that's what I've got for you. Any questions?
I went down there yesterday just to look around. And why is all the responsibility falling on 906 North Market when 921 shares exactly the same road?
Well, if they can get 921 to help them out in that requirement, we don't have the ability.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering if we're gonna have some civil liability or some, hopefully we won't, we won't have neighbors feuding, but it, it seems like all the responsibility is gonna be put on 906 when 921 shares exactly the same roadway.
You're right.
I would agree with Councilmember Spruell. I also looked at the property today. So I, I have a couple of questions. One is the road that's currently there, even though it's not paved. Is the city maintaining it to the 921 property at this point in time?
I was not able to determine that. I don't, is there anyone in the room that might have an idea of that, to that answer?
So I, I, I think my issue is with us passing this at this point in time, number one is that they're not the only property on that, on that street that's being served. 921 is also being served by that property. And, and in, under the one, the one last statement in the resolution states that they, they would be responsible for the maintenance of the property. And so I, I just feel that I'm in agreement with Councilmember Spruell that there's, that they're not the only ones on the end of that street. So it's not that I'm against the property as it is right now or approving it, it's just that, it seems to be that we would be encroaching on this other 921's rights by saying that this is the way it's gonna be and 906 is going to be entirely responsible for it. So I, I just would like some clarification either on a legal standpoint or,
Yeah.
or from this, from the streets and roads.
And I think it's important to note that the, the condition is not that they maintain the entire stretch of unpaved road, just that portion from Driscoll up to their driveway. So the, the 921 property is beyond that. And it, it was apparently, the building permits were pulled, we're not sure, but probably maybe 40 years ago. We're not even sure there was a requirement in the, in the building code that they had to have paving in order to pull the building permit, so. It's probably, 921 is probably a pre-existing non-conforming use. And they, they do have access to the north if they want to get to their property. So it wouldn't, the burden for maintenance wouldn't fall solely on 906. And I think, you know, obviously, they, they presented their, the, what they believe are the unique circumstances that would allow you to deviate from the requirement. And I think our, our new code section provides you with, you're complying with the code by holding a hearing and discussing the unique circumstances. If you chose to approve the request, you would certainly be relying on the reasoning that, that they put forward in their application.
One of the concerns that I have is 906 is responsible for the road, but we have not put any stipulations in here saying that it's gotta meet our specifications. If they decide, hey, this is my road, I wanna put a speed bump up here because we've got a lot of people coming back and forth. And the way it's written right now, they're responsible for that road. Do they have the authority to do such a thing? And if we don't have it in writing, say they don't, I'm afraid they could take the road over and it's, now becomes their road.
Well, it is a platted public road, so the, the city would continue to own the right of way. And the idea there was, it's a life safety issue. They need to, to keep it free and clear and open.
Correct. And if they don't?
It, it would be a code enforcement issue and the city could take a code enforcement action if, if they, you know, one of, the requirement that it be made of appropriate construction so that the fire department can get in there. If they fail to do that, obviously, the, the complaint would probably come from the fire department. Or, or, you know, perhaps Public Works or something, but the, the city would have the ability to enforce the condition if you included that condition in, in the, the approval.
Can we hear from, from Public Works, Brian? You know, can you come up? Cause I, I guess I just have questions, like what would it take for us to, to do the maintenance? Cause the way I see it, I'm in support of the exemption to the land use code. I think that is a unique property and that it's an inequitable requirement to make them pave it. But then I'm afraid that this stipulation is as well. And so I measured it and it looks like it's less than, it's about 645 feet according to GIS of road, that whole entire curve, cor, you know, corner. Would it be a lot for us to maintain it? Cause we also can maintain it but still say like, well, we're still not gonna plow it, but.
Well, I mean, we have a hard time, you know, keeping up with all the, you know, all the roads are, you know, as the transportation master plan showed, you know, a lot of our roads are in poor conditions, so we're, you know, we're, we're behind on our maintenance. You know, we just prioritize it like any other, any other road that we maintain.
So would it be an undue burden for us to just leave it the way it is for us right now? I mean, because we're semi-maintaining it or whatever, it's kind of thrown in the pile right now. I just feel that by putting it on, totally on the 906 property, that the 921 property, if something were to come up, that would, I mean, it, it may affect their rights, whereas if we just left it alone as it is, it might make more sense. I don't know, I'm just throwing this out for council and discussion.
I, I, I mean, it's a status quo. It's no, no change for us, you know, if we, if we leave it as is.
I, I'm not opposed to that, the House whatsoever. I, I think if we require them to pave it, it's unfair. And I went down, the road's, the road's in good shape and I would hope that it would stay that way, but we have nothing concrete saying that it's going to. And I think 921 has some liability on that street as well as 906. But if 906 wants to, as long as they carry through, I have no problem with it. I, I, I hate to see something go bad because the road becomes deteriorated because of more traffic. 921's been there for a long time and all of a sudden, the apple cart's been upturned and there's no stipulations on exactly what you're gonna do to remedy that.
Do we have utilities in that road?
I think, I think we, we do have some, at least nearby. We have a sanitary sewer that's there. You know, the water line goes through, through the property. I'd, I'd have to check to get the, get all the details of where all the utility lines are, but there are lines nearby and some through the property.
I would like to ask council, would, would there be a downside for us as, for the city by removing the number one stipulation or whatever that puts the requirement on 906 to maintain that road? Is there a problem with this? Because that would be pretty much keeping the status quo as it is.
And I, I guess I'm, and Brian wasn't able to clarify whether the status quo involves the city maintaining it. Obviously, maintenance would consist of putting a blade on it a couple of times a year and maybe putting some gravel periodically. I don't know if the city currently does that or not. It, it is a city street that was dedicated to the public. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe the city has a gravel road standard because the, the expectation is that when, at least under the current code. I don't know what it was in 1957 when this was annexed and platted, but current code anticipates that you'll pave before you build. And so there's, there's not a, a primitive road or gravel road standard in terms of construction design or anything like that, so. But certainly the city has the equipment and the ability to, to do periodic maintenance. You know, you're not gonna get potholes in a gravel road, but you may get washboarding or, or mud if, if the gravel gets pounded in, so. You, you could, I guess, put a condition that the, the city will conduct periodic maintenance to maintain the road in its current condition or something like that.
And that's generally what we do. I, I mean, we, we have, we have a number of dirt gravel roads and, you know, kind of an, as, on an as-needed basis, we'll blade or, you know, go back and apply gravel sometimes, just depending on the situation.
My question for council would be, if we were to do that, would that protect the city from any requests or maybe I should say demands from the property owners to get it up to curb and gutter standards or something like that? Would that protect us or would that, could that be a possibility that could come back and be requested of us?
I, I don't think the city has any liability by not requiring it to be paved or by not requiring it to be upgraded with sidewalk curb and gutter. There, there's a lot of other properties that are in a similar situation and, and it's, it's certainly based on the budgetary concerns. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't think we're exposing ourselves to additional liability by either requiring the applicant to do maintenance or by having the city to apparently continue to do some maintenance on it.
All right, well, do we wanna hear from the applicant then? Like to invite the applicants up? Yeah. Microphone, just make sure it's green.
Can you hear me? Okay. The, we, we recognize and, and understand the, the uniqueness of the property. And it's really the reason we're even involved in and purchased it and are interested in developing it. We bought the property in October and, you know, we're just pushing forward to, to build a home. It's gonna be about a 1,900 square foot, single level, kind of a plain Jane home. And we're, you know, as far as the road maintenance goes, all I know is, I'm from out of town, but all I know is from talking to the neighbors and across the street and stuff, that the, the street's been that way for a long time and she's, she's happy with it and we're happy with it and I don't know, I can't tell you exactly what the city's done, but they've obviously done something because if, if, those of you that were there, it's a great road. I mean, it's a great dirt road or non-paved road. So in talking with city staff about the maintenance issue, we're, we're of a position that we would take guidance from the city as to what we should do, not, it wasn't necessarily our idea, but we're in favor of whatever it takes to keep the process going, get the house up and spend the rest of our lives here. So. Yeah.
We have friends and family here and we thought that we should leave a larger town. We're from Cedar City, Utah, originally from Arizona. Cedar City is exploding and is supposed to grow 40% and it's already happening. And they have removed like some of the beautiful pastures and things that used, that I used to enjoy on my drives for working and things like that. And, and still here in Cortez, people know one another, they treat each other well. The, the landscape of the city is different. It's growing but not at some ridiculous amount of people coming in. And so when we found this property, I'm one of those people who have, I have a lot of surgeries to count. And I have had four knee surgeries, three knee replacements because I was born with crooked legs. And when we saw this lot downtown, we thought, I really thought, what a great opportunity for us. We've been blessed with some pretty good health and in the next 10 to 15 years, we could probably stay there and access the city services and walk, which is what I want to do all the time. It is just the two of us. We would have some family come in every once in a while, but they actually live in other parts of the country. I just came from Washington DC and brought a virus with me. But in any event, it, it is just the two of us and I actually don't drive very much. My husband does the driving. But from that area, we could easily, he can get on his bike, I can walk downtown, I can walk to church. And so as far as maybe overuse of the road, I don't think that we would make much difference in, in the scheme of things. Because it wouldn't get used a whole lot more than it is now. And the gal across the street that we've, you know, talked with several times is, is concerned, of course, because we're gonna block part of her view, but she already understands that we're gonna be pretty quiet neighbors. And so we're not gonna be having wild parties and all those things. So in any event, hopefully that will answer your question about, as far as maintaining, we would be, because we're gonna maybe, in the future, if we would need the ambulance or we would need the fire department or whatever it would be, we would wanna make sure that the road stays like it is so that, you know, those city services don't have any problems coming to us.
We, we've gone way over. Can I say one more thing, Noel?
Please, yeah.
All throughout this process, since we kinda decided to move here, we, we moved here now, we're renting, but I gotta tell you that the city staff has been exemplary in, in walking us and helping us and, and doing everything they can do, especially the, the development people like Rachel and then Brian, of course, because we've got, we've got to put the utilities in. So Brian's deeply involved. And, and I just got to know Nancy and she's unbelievable, as you know. So my time's up.
Thank you.
Well, we're glad to hear that. And I think one of our main questions is, are you okay with the cycle of maintenance then, the like wider cycle, cycle of maintenance that the city could provide? Or do you wanna take on the maintenance yourself because you would want it to happen more frequently?
Oh, no, no, we, we, we're happy with, you tell us.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I, I was just gonna say, this is a very unique situation. This lot's been vacant since 1957 and you know, I, I think this really meets the need for an exemption on, on this. And, and I'm glad to hear you talk about how you feel comfortable maintaining that road, et cetera. So, thank you.
So I'll give you a little history. I grew up at 612 North Market before there was ever a road there.
Wow.
I used to ride my bicycle in the sagebrush down there. My concern was that they were accepting more responsibility than they should. And the road's in great shape. And if it stays in great shape, there is absolutely no issue for me of them starting their, their house there.
Yeah, I, I know we still have to open it for public comment, but I did just wanna-
Yeah, I, um, I know we still have to open it for public comment, but I did just want to add one other thing. That it is, it is a unique, single infill lot on an existing dirt road. So it is really a one-off example in, in our community. I, I tried to think of anywhere else where there really is any other lot like that and I, I can't. And I think that the fact that it's single, a, a single lot, a single infill lot, that very likely would be unbuildable otherwise, I think is, is one of the, one of the reasons that, that it does make sense.
Yeah. Any other comments for the applicant?
Well, I just want to say that I live on North Market Street and I probably walk that road at least once per week. And it is really well maintained, at least up to this point. I've, to my knowledge, I don't think I've ever seen a car on that road before. So I don't feel like having one more resident on that road is going to make a, a difference. I typically go to Carpenter and kind of walk down that road and then access Carpenter from that end. And, um, yeah, I think that the discussion has been really good and I agree that we don't want to put undue burden on them. But I suggest that if it's working, why not keep it the same? They seem to be okay with it, the neighbor seems to be okay with it. And I don't want to make it too complicated for anybody on either end of the spectrum.
Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak on the, um, for or against or have any comments on this, um, resolution? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion.
Madam Mayor, just as a reminder, you have a resolution, a draft resolution. It does contain the condition regarding maintenance. And based on the discussion, I think the question is, do you want to just approve the resolution without a condition? Or do you want to approve the resolution with the con- That's-
Madam Mayor? Um, so I move that council approve resolution number two, series twenty twenty-five. A resolution approving the request for an exception to land use code section five point zero-three. Driveways and access for property located at nine oh six North Market Street.
Second.
All right, so that implies without the condition?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, motion made by Randall and seconded by Keith Hoffer?
Before we, before we vote, I did just want to clarify one thing. That as part of that, the city is not taking on any additional maintenance, um, that it, it's basically as, as it is. Okay.
And, and if you, if the person who made the motion wishes to amend the motion and-
I would amend that motion to include the fact that the city is taking on no greater responsibilities than it currently has in maintaining that road.
And then the, the second should also accept that if they so choose.
Second.
Okay. A motion made by Randall and seconded by Keith Hoffer?
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on on our agenda to number six, unfinished business. We have none tonight. Uh, so number seven is new business. Seven A is memorandum of understanding between the city and county regarding, uh, the county landfill. This council will consider approving a memorandum of understanding between Montezuma County regarding the use of the dead animal pit by the city's police department and, at the county landfill, presented by Andy Brock, our interim chief of police.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Uh, the animal control position in the Cortez Police Department has historically managed nuisance skunks within the city by setting traps and capturing them. Once they're captured, the skunks were transported to the Montezuma County landfill where they were euthanized by firearm at the designated dead animal pit. If left uncontrolled, the skunks can become a significant nuisance to the residents and they also carry disease that pose a risk to both people or humans and animals. According to state statute, trapped skunks must be euthanized and cannot be, um, relocated or released elsewhere. The Montezuma County landfill, including the dead animal pit, is owned and operated by the county. Recently, the county implemented a policy prohibiting the discharge of firearms at the landfill. To allow the city of Cortez to continue its skunk control efforts, a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, MOU, has been developed and approved by both the city and county attorneys. This MOU grants us Cortez Police Department authorization to discharge firearms at the landfill, strictly for the purpose of euthanizing vermin in a safe and controlled environment. By signing the MOU, the city can continue to effectively manage the skunk population. On average, um, approximately twenty skunks are trapped and euthanized each year. We recommend that the council approve the memorandum of understanding allowing for the continued humane disposal of nuisance skunks at the Montezuma County landfill, dead animal pit, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Any questions?
Just a comment. Uh, when I lived against that lot behind Big R and Walmart, I had a neighbor who caught like thirty-six skunk a year.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
You know what? It's an average of twenty, but I've seen forty and fifty being caught too. So those are the ones that we catch. I'm not sure what the citizens catch.
Right.
I'd like to add a comment too. I'd like to thank the county for allowing us to, to do that.
Absolutely.
And I think it's good to have MOUs just, just to formalize relationships and, and clear expectations and-
Yes, thank you.
I move that council approve the memorandum of understanding allowing for the continued humane disposal of nuisance skunks at the Montezuma County landfill, dead animal pit, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Lewis?
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, thank you, chief. Um, we're going to move on to seven B on our agenda. Consider award of contract for service center, uh, security fencing project. So the council will consider accepting the bid and awarding the contract for the service center security fencing project to Hornet, Hornet Fence LLC and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign on behalf of the city. Uh, presented by Casey Simpson, our general services director.
Good evening, mayor and council. A little bit of background, due to security issues in the lower yard, this, at the city service center, it was decided during the budget process last year that the, that N-area should be fenced off. The fencing goes down, um, follow, or it continues existing fencing and pursues a path south towards the pond and then gated entry, entrance will be installed across the road and then continue back up along the property line on the west side of the property, um, between the businesses there and, uh, return back towards the, the service center as it travels north. The advertisement for bid was put out on BidNet, uh, the city's website and the Cortez Journal. We received, um, and we received five bids or six bids. Two bids were disqualified as they did not have a, a big guarantee. And the remaining bids were evaluated, um, according to the state of Colorado's matrix for, uh, construction bids, which gives a forty percent weight to the cost and a, or a sixty percent weight to the cost and a forty percent weight to the qualifications. Um, I've included the matrix for your review. The, uh, the staff, um, and in connection with the matrix are, um, suggesting that we award the, the contract for the service center security fencing project to, um, Hornet Fence LLC. Are there any questions?
Great. And just making sure this wouldn't affect the, um, because yeah, when you say the main entrance to the yard, that's on like the north side of the building. It wouldn't affect where the water dock and, uh, recycling is.
Uh, great question. Um, they, the bid does include a new gate on the west side of the property, which is where all of the staff and all of the equipment is stored. But the public entrance, which includes the water dock and the recycling, that will not be fenced and that will remain open to the public.
Great.
I move the council accept the bid and award the contract for a service center security fencing project to Hornet Fence LLC at its bid price of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruul?
Dobree?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none. Uh, so nine is city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, number ten is city manager report. Um, our city manager is absent tonight. He is at the, um, Colorado CCCMA, CCMA. Um, Colorado City Man, City and County Managers Association Conference in Glenwood Springs this week with, uh, city managers and county administrators from across the state. Okay, so eleven on our agenda is the city council committee reports. Eleven A is the mayor's report on the workshop. Um, so in our workshop, we had a presentation from Judge Beth Padilla on the municipal court operations. Um, the, our court is doing great networking with, um, district attorneys in the area, with other municipality, um, courts and, um, just building really great relationships across the community, also with Pinion Project and other resources. Judge Padilla also shared some statistics with us to show that, um, there are a lot more cases happening this quarter than there were this time last year. We went from seventy-nine criminal court cases to a hundred and fifty-one, almost double this year from last year. Last year, we only, at this time, we only had one land use code case. We've had eight already now. We went from twenty-two parking violations to sixty-nine. And then traffic and animal violations have stayed relatively the same. But, um, jail time has gone up from seventy, fifty-seven people last year to seventy-two people already this year. Um, so they're getting busier, but we do have Beth, um, for ten hours a week now. And so then it sounds like outreach court is still going well, six graduated so far. They now have a part-time assistant. Um, and just for more detailed information, I really encourage, uh, the community to watch our workshop. So then the next presentation we had was from our airport director, Jeremy Patton, on the Colorado Aviation Economic Impact Study for Cortez Municipal Airport. So this was based off, uh, twenty twenty-three data. Um, so it hasn't even captured the last two years, which have been doing really well for our airport. But, um, according to the state, we, um, our airport has, is responsible for two hundred and nineteen jobs. And remember, this includes more than just our commercial air. Fifteen million in payroll, twenty-seven point five million value added in dollars and then fifty million in revenue. Um, so that's the impact that our airport has. We also saw forty-three states fly in and out of our airport last year. Um, whether that be private or part of our commercial service. Um, and then just, uh, we learned from our airport director that, uh, we'll, during the repaving project, our airport will be closed from October fourth to twenty-fourth, um, so twenty days. And as that gets closer, more announcements will go out. So just giving people a heads up to, um, plan to not travel in and out of Cortez Airport during that timeframe. Uh, helicopters can still come in and out. Okay, and then last on our, um, workshop, we had an update from the Historic Preservation Board. And, uh, big year next year for, uh, history of Cortez, Colorado and the USA. So twenty twenty-six will be thirty years for the Historic Preservation Board, a hundred and forty years for Cortez, a hundred and fifty years for the, for Colorado State and two hundred and fifty years for the US. Um, we also are celebrating, um, Historic Preservation, um, month for the month of May. We did a proclamation earlier in the meeting. And then, um, we also are celebrating Historic Preservation, Preservation Day on May thirty-first. All right, so then we'll move on to other board reports. Uh, eleven A is other board reports. We'll start with council member Spruul. None? Okay.
Yes, uh, the golf advisory board met on April eighteenth. It's originally scheduled for the twenty-fifth, but we had some conflicts with, uh, schedules. Pretty much, much of what I reported last time, revenues are, are, uh, still very strong. Course conditions are excellent. We've got one of the best courses, uh, course conditions in our area. The majority of the conversation, um, revolved around the use of, of private carts again. And that's going to be an ongoing discussion. We looked at three things. We need to change the ordinance. The ordinance has limitation of, of no more than eighty carts. As I mentioned last time, we exceed that. So we've worked out, uh, an area where if, if they exceed the eighty, we will have them, uh, use a daily fee. And then we talked about capping that daily fee where you could only use that ten times and then from there, you would need to buy a, a season's pass or a trail, uh, fee. We need to change our procedures. We need to have a release for liability. We got into a long discussion about, um, owning a private cart and who's allowed to ride in that cart with, without having a fee. So we talked about immediate family or then we got into discussion about, is that family need to be under one roof? And we talked about friends that have joint ownership. I, I could go on and on. But, um, this is something that is, is going to continue and I would imagine the next meeting will be pretty long. Our limiting factor was we had to be here for a retreat or we might still be going. So that's the end of my report.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to other items of business. We have none tonight. So thirteen on our agenda is our second public participation section. There's no limit to the number of speakers and no overall time limit, but speakers still have a limit of three minutes per person. May only speak once and may not see time to another commenter. All right, seeing no, um, public, do we want, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree?
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight and have a great night. Happy Easter.